I have a book for you to read.
Okay, thank you. We will rejoin our meeting. We were in a special meeting with the town board regarding Chapter 1 of Crossing, and we will resume our meeting. First item on the agenda is the Yeshiva Farm Settlement. This is an application for a site development plan amendment and a stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, cemetery building, 220 Proton Lake Road. It's a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry for the long delay. We're actually more sorry.
You deserve a lot of credit. That was quite a hearing. My name is Theodor Strauss. I'm the architect for Yeshiva on this project, and I want to introduce it to you. It is a small building adjacent to the existing cemetery. It is in one of the most remote areas, probably in the county. And it is designed and intended to provide facilities for those in mourning and those visiting the cemetery. It serves the purpose of providing facilities for these people, and it is that and that only.
It's got smaller from what we saw last time. You've reduced it now just to a facility building as opposed to a mourning building.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, good. Sabrina, Bob, any questions, comments?
I had one comment, but he's addressed it. He brought in the approved plans by the county, and that was my comment.
Right. Sabrina, do you have any comments?
No, I think the revised plan for the bathrooms show 11 parking spaces that are currently there. They are gravel spaces. In accordance with the parking code of the town, parking section of the town code, the planning board has the authority because this use is not an as-of-right use listed. You'll need to determine and note for the record that the 11 spaces appears to be adequate for the bathroom facilities that are being proposed. I see no need to create more parking spaces if they've been dealing with the 11 parking spaces. You know, this is just a restroom facility for attendees to services there.
If I may address one other item that was previously brought up was a site distance or a sightline item. And that relates to the ability to see this facility from any other place, and it's literally impossible. The location and the depth and the size of the building are such that it is in its remote location and literally invisible from any other place, even to this gentleman, who is Mr. Bauer, a member of the community, who lives probably the closest to it, which is about 400 feet away, and he cannot even see the cell tower, let alone this building.
Okay.
So just to clarify then, the building is set back far enough from the edge of the steep slope down to the road.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
That you can't see it.
Very much so.
Perfect. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Craig, did you have a question on the parking?
I think Sabrina answered. I was just curious if 11 spots were enough not for the bathroom but for the people who come to visit. I was at a service last week at Sharon Gardens, and there was about 30, 40 people at the service, and cars were parked all over the place because there wasn't enough parking there. And I think people have been parked on some of the... Yeah. So I'm just wondering, do you guys have enough parking there just to service yourself?
Absolutely. And as a supplemental parking to this, there is adjacent parking next to the cell tower if any further is needed. This cemetery has been in existence for close to 40 years. Fortunately, the number of requirements for its use has been extremely limited, and the maximum number of mourners that have arrived have been in less than five cars. So the 11, I am sure, will more than cover any conditions, and should any further be necessary, there are supplemental spaces within 150 feet.
And I think it's important for the board to note that when you're making the determination that 11 is adequate to establish the record for this type of use.
Yep. Good. Okay. Do we have that in a resolution?
We'll add it as amended.
Okay.
Yeah, that's something I was going to bring up when we got to that point. I think we should add a resolve clause to specifically set forth your findings that 11 spaces are adequate.
Yep, agreed. Okay, terrific. Any other comments, questions from the board?
No.
Any comments from the public? Remember, if you're next.
We have a weird audience.
We have a long history of suppressing audiences. Okay, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, Jennifer, we have our resolution.
Yep, resolution. This is a secret type 2 action, so there's no...
Right. Any questions, comments on the resolution except the one amendment that's been proposed by council?
I don't have any.
So as amended, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set?
Mr. Chairman, is there any possibility that I may get a copy of the resolution? Or shall I ask?
Well, it will be amended, but yeah. Have you seen it? This is the unamended.
You can have my resolution, but it does need to be amended. It's not the final resolution. Well, why don't we wait? We'll get you the final one.
I'll get that when I see you.
Okay, you're all set.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much. Appreciate your courtesy and your attention.
Well, we appreciate your patience.
Thank you very much.
Good night now.
Good night now.
Okay, we move now to our next application. This is an informal hearing for a new application. Homeland Towers LLC, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, New Singular Wireless DCS LLC, Town of Newcastle, an application for a special use permit, wetlands permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan for a wireless telecommunications services facility on Barnes Lane.
We have no traffic impact proposed at this facility. I'll promise you that.
Well, please help the chairman.
Good evening. Robert Cordiosso with the Law Firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder on behalf of Homeland Towers and T-Mobile. I'm joined by my colleague Anthony Morando from Cuddy &amp; Fader on behalf of AT&amp;T. We did submit an application. We did receive a number of comments from your staff, mostly things related to the plans and the stormwater pollution plan and things along those lines, and we're happy to put together responses and amendments based on those items. Quite frankly, given the late time, really the only thing we're looking to accomplish tonight is to possibly schedule a balloon test to be able to do visual renderings. What we did do is we submitted a Viewshed map with proposed photo locations. What we would typically do would be do a balloon test at your convenience on a day and time that works for you. In case of inclement weather, roll it over to the consecutive day. Given the holidays, you know, this time of year, we thought, you know, sometime in January to give everyone enough time to be able to get it done after the holidays, so there's no conflict with anyone's schedule.
Okay, sounds fair.
One question about the visual assessment map is that the numbers, we don't have a key to identify what these locations are.
So, yeah, so...
So it's hard to know if there are any are missing.
Yeah, so a couple of things. One would be if the board or staff between now and the task wants additional locations, I would just ask, put an X on the map and send it to us, but we could also send you addresses. Those are basically, though, general areas, and what we do is when we go out, we'll take a number of photographs, and if we see the balloon, we might adjust the location in the field to get the better photograph of it. But if there are other viewpoints or things like that, let us know in advance. And then in the final visual resource evaluation that we submit, we would include a key map with each one of the locations keyed to one of the dyes.
But could we have the key to what you've proposed here so that...
Sure, that's no problem.
...you can see the design now and might want to include?
Sure. I just don't understand that it will, like, so if we say, you know, 42 Smith Lane, when we go out in the field, it might be 43 Smith Lane because there might be a tree right standing in the way.
If I may, for the board's information, we did get a member of the public come in and ask, you know, very concerned about the location of the tower from her home. I'd like to give the applicant the address and the complaint so we can incorporate it into your proposal.
Absolutely. And I think we received that.
170 Cavendish Road?
Yes, yes.
So we'll add that as well.
You have it?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, I have one question, and postpone the rest, I guess, or others will speak. Why does it have to be 180 feet?
So we're trying to do a couple of things. We're trying to cover the area shown in the coverage maps that we submitted. We have two applicants, so they have to be separated at least 10 feet, and we want to design it for co-location, both for the other two carriers that are in the area plus municipal services. So that's part of the reports that we submitted, one on behalf of AT&amp;T, one on behalf of T-Mobile, and we do need a variance as part of the process. And at some point, we'll want to go to the zoning board to request that 100, that 30-foot height variance above 150 feet. But that is part of our showing, and I do agree with that.
So did you look at what kind of coverage you would achieve if you did 170-foot tall or 150-foot tall?
Yeah, we've submitted some of that documentation. We expect that you'll hire a consultant, and he or she may have some specific requirements as far as what else they would like to see, so we're happy to work with them and provide any additional information on that.
Based on the height, on your exhibit D, it appears to me that there's two poles missing from this exhibit.
So let me just make sure I have the right document that you're referring to.
And then I want to start talking about height. Because there's a pole on Hoag's Cross and there's a pole on 134 that don't seem to have made their way onto this diagram.
Can I just see what you're talking about, because we did submit two R reports.
You don't have that good, you have it electronically, Robert?
I'm sorry?
Do you have that so we can put it on the screen?
I don't have it with me. We did submit it with it, but I know which one you're referring to.
I know, but again, next time if we can have...
It's colored 11 by 17.
Isn't this the patch?
Mine was ripped loose. Mine wasn't attached to anything. It was just loosened.
I have what you're talking about. Exhibit D.
Exhibit D, okay.
Sure. So, sorry, which, which, did you...
So there's a pole on Hoag's Cross, which isn't identified, and there's a pole on 134 that's not identified. So you're talking about coverage area, and I'm just wondering, were those poles calculated in your coverage area that determine that this is the best spot for this pole?
Sure. So I don't believe T-Mobile are on those poles, but we can certainly look at them as if...
Oh, so this is specific to T-Mobile?
This is specific to T-Mobile, correct.
Gotcha.
But they could be on those poles, but they're not...
Yeah, so we can certainly look at that and...
So I think Craig's point is still very valid here.
Yeah, I'm fairly confident, given those locations, that it won't matter, also given AT&amp;T's location, because there was a separate report for AT&amp;T as well, but we'll certainly have T-Mobile address that issue.
So a pole, so a pole is you tented out space on the pole to different carriers, and not every pole has every carrier on it? So like some, one pole could be AT&amp;T and Sprint, another one could be Joe and Mary and et cetera, et cetera?
So there...
Is that the reason for all the poles popping up in this area?
So there are four carriers, okay, and they're licensed by the FCC, so it's not necessarily Joe and Mary, but it's Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, and T-Mobile, the four general ones. It's not always necessarily a pole. It could be a rooftop. For example, Reader's Digest is a rooftop, but it has all the carriers on it. But typically, if there's a pole, each of the carriers will eventually co-locate on that pole. One of the things about when they co-locate is that they're all not at the top of the pole, meaning that they're separated by about 10-foot increments. So one carrier will be essentially 40 feet higher or 35 feet higher than the bottom carrier, and that will affect their coverage range. What will also affect their coverage range is their frequency level, but it'll also be dependent on what their capacity needs are in the area. So to answer your question is that we'll have T-Mobile look at those other poles and provide maps to show even if they were on those poles, whether or not they would need this site, but that's the answer, is that they do need sites in a particular area to cover that particular area.
So can I ask about the 150-foot pole?
Sure.
That would presumably, if you still wanted to co-locate four carriers, that would mean that the one of them would be at 110 feet, one at 120, 30, 40?
So it would be 150, 140, 130, 120 would be the lowest.
And the effective coverage area of the 120, is that documentation you have?
So it's something that we could provide as part of the analysis.
Yeah, I think, Robert, there's a lot of additional information you could provide to help this go a little bit smoother.
Sure.
And, you know, putting on that coverage map, doing topography on that coverage map will help understand the relationship of the land in relation to your frequencies.
One of the things that I just felt, we've talked for a long time about why do we, this is not, you know, this is us, why are we in a position of receiving these applications as independent problems when actually it's an overall infrastructure problem? And we talked for quite a while, a long time ago, about having some kind of a master plan for this stuff.
Yeah.
You know, where are the dark areas? What's the best distribution of infrastructure in order to meet the demand? And if you do, if you do like 20, 80-foot poles, is that better or worse than 450-foot poles? That's something that for some reason the town has, maybe we didn't push hard enough. The town has decided not to explore.
It's an action in the conflict.
Well, then...
I think the other problem is...
Is it actually on the schedule of items? Remember, there was, wasn't, didn't we recommend that there was actually a...
You did.
Execution timeframe for all these?
It didn't work out well.
You did. Yeah, it didn't work out that well.
Now, add to that the changing, the changing technology. So if we came here five years ago and told you this was the plan for the town...
And then we changed the plan.
And then, and then the technology changes, and then the usage changes, so...
We changed the plan.
No, I agree. I don't disagree with you, and that's, and that's what the carriers are doing constantly now. So you hear about DAS, you hear about small cells, you hear about 5G, you hear about all these things. You still need the macro site infrastructure to cover these large areas with this type of topography, but there are underlays now being put in. Five years ago, when you came in, T-Mobile didn't have 600 megahertz. Now they have 600 megahertz. They didn't have 700 five years ago, and now they have 700. That changes, that changes the whole dynamic. The usage changes, the mergers and acquisitions. It's just, it's endless.
I got it. It's a moving landscape.
Yep, yeah, that's a good way to put it.
No pun intended.
Because the big picture, yeah, the big picture master plan that Tom's talking about, for instance, when they did the Hoag's Cross pole, it had to be on top of the hill because we needed to be on top of the hill so everybody could see it so it had coverage. But now this pole's at the bottom of a valley, so it's like, so which argument is right? Well, at the top of the hill or at the bottom of the valley?
Well, it depends on where you are, depends on what you're trying to cover. If you're trying to cover a valley, believe it or not, you want to be in the valley.
So to be in the valley, then you don't need 180-foot pole, so this pole is actually trying to reach above the ridge lines.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought was more...
No, it's really trying to cover the valley. It's really trying to cover that iconic state, great valley part.
I'll have that technical...
Yeah, no, and that's, and that's all part of it. And I also think the other part of it, you know, again, it's, I'll go back to the site that we were here last on, which was controversial, and you ultimately approved, and the height went down 20 feet. I don't know if you've all been out there to see it. If you could tell the difference between 150 and 130, I mean, in my opinion, that site should have been 150 because at 130, it's a little bit underperforming, and at 150, I don't think it would have aesthetically been much of a difference, but...
Which side is that?
No, and that's, and that's right. And I think it was, I think it was based on a technical reason, though, and someone would have compromised, but...
So you're saying that 150 would be fine for this site too, then?
No, so this one, this one, the 180 is what we're asking for. We feel pretty comfortable that the technology proofs will bear out on that.
Is there more radiation with 700 megahertz that you have to worry about relative to the studies that were done in the past at much lower?
No, I mean, it's still all in the same ranges, so for example, this site is 98 times below the federal limit with all four carriers on it. The thing which actually drops that is the height. By going higher, it's less.
So here's a, I don't want to belabor this because we're going to be going through this in detail later, but just a question. The reason that these carriers need to be 10 feet apart is because there's noise between the signals?
So that's one way to explain it. There's, they are in their own frequency bands, but they still need to be, have certain physical separations to not cause interference with each other.
Does that mean that you couldn't put two separate carriers on separate poles at the same height on the same piece of property?
Typically, rule of thumb would be at least 40 or 50 feet separation.
That's very interesting.
Yeah, at least 40 or feet, 40 or 50.
How big is the site? That's very interesting.
This is a town site, right?
This is a town-owned property.
It's actually two parcels, and I think you kind of need to identify that.
Well, one, the first parcel's owned by the water district, and we have a easement across that to get to this parcel, which is owned by the town.
Yeah, so this is really a two-parcel...
Interesting fact is when they were researching sites, they had picked a much higher site location, and when they investigated, there was a really nice vernal wetland system on the top of the area, so we ruled that out as not being feasible to access. So then they looked at another site that is much lower, so I think that's why they had to increase...
That's correct, and we did go up because of that.
So I'm assuming that this 180-foot pole works for the lowest carrier?
Correct.
Right?
And it's also, even, even, I think, when you look at AT&amp;T's report, it talks about the fact, they'd like to even be higher. So when you look at AT&amp;T's report, even at the top of the pole, 176-foot center line, they would prefer to be higher.
Of course they would.
Yeah, but that's, that's the trade-off, obviously.
How high is it? They want to go up, right?
Sure, that's the, that's, well, you don't, well, to an extent, because if you go too high, you go too high, you cause interference in your own network.
Okay, that was a flippant comment. I apologize for that.
If you go too high, we'd have to require you to disguise it with feathers or something.
Well, you started also getting into FAA lighting issues, which we don't need here.
Where I meant to go with this was if it works for the lowest carrier, 150 feet, let me just finish, on, on one pole, you could have four poles and satisfy all the carriers at 150 feet if the site's big enough and not have to go to 180.
So let me take a step back. AT&amp;T has already said that 180 is the minimum for AT&amp;T.
But you need a variance for that.
And we're willing to go seek that variance. We don't have any problem with going through that process.
Okay, as long as you understand you need a variance for that.
We understand that. We understand that completely.
An option to that variance, if there's a denial of the variance, there is a technical solution. It may not be a preference of the carrier, but there's a technical solution to provide service for all the carriers, which could be two poles, three poles, four poles to reduce the height.
Yeah, I understand your point.
I'm just putting that in the mix, so you don't have to, I mean, if you want to, you can respond to that, but we're going to get into that later. I just want to put it out there so you know where my thinking's going.
I had some questions about the proposed site itself. It seemed that the actual site that you're proposing is substantially larger than the footprint that you really need for the construction, and I think Steve had some comments that some trees are being cleared that don't seem to be necessary, and then the road that goes up there is 20 feet wide. Does it have to be 20 feet wide?
Yeah.
From what I understand, Jerry Mochell, the commissioner, needed that for access.
Yeah, so the town has future plans for the property, and that was part of the request, is we actually build a 20-foot-wide road.
Up to your antenna. Is it going off of a road that's already there? Is there a town road there already?
No, so there's, so you come off Campfire Road.
Right.
You come through the water district property, okay? Then we're, then there's a driveway in there. We're proposing go from there...
Up the hill to you?
Up the hill to the town-owned property, which is the second property, to the proposed installation.
Right.
The town has future plans, as our understanding, to build a garage next to it.
Up on top of?
Right next to us.
Next to it, adjacent to it, so that's why Jerry wanted the access for his trucks.
Out of the wetland buffer.
Yeah, so that's what forced us into the wetland buffer. I think we're about 48 feet from the wetland, and I know there was a comment to get D E C to confirm that. We've met with them. We have no problem doing that process. But that was part of the, part of the limitation of the property. The town does have other plans with the property.
Is your application then clearing these trees and this extra area for the town?
No, no, we're not doing any of the work for the town, but rather than, rather than building one access drive and then the town have to build an advanced access drive in the future, we took on the responsibility to build the access drive.
I understand that, but at the site itself, the top there...
No, the site itself, we're clearing for our facility. We'll look at those couple of trees that were identified...
There were a couple, I think.
And see if we can, if we can limit that and see if we can do some...
Steve, I know he's got a couple, I shouldn't, you know, he's got comments on it, so he can go through it better than I.
Sure.
Want to go through it, Steve?
Sure. Further site plan, we just wanted, you know, further documentation on the wetland delineation, you know, state validation block, and then this thing itself, if we could show the full extent of wetlands on both sides of the property, because they just have partials shown on the site. And then, you know, a few other things, just to, you know, with the trees, there's several along the road, and I numbered which ones I thought, you know, would like to be taken a closer look at to see if whether you could use tree protection or just avoid, you know, the drip line of those trees. Those are the primary concerns.
Sabrina, do you have comments?
I do have comments. The, you know, I pointed out that it's under a special permit. They have certain criteria to meet in relation to a special permit. The section on block number should be on each of the plans. The area of the lots should be confirmed, because we're looking at two lots. There's an equipment compound of 32, 30 square feet, and then the least area of 3,800 square feet. They're going to have an eight-foot-high chain link fence with the 12-foot-wide gates on the southeastern side. Maybe you can talk about the access driveway. Are you going to own it? Is the town going to own it? Who's going to maintain it? And whether or not you need to create maintenance parking spaces within your driveway footprint. Confirmation of the setbacks. So right now, the plan was very convoluted. It was very difficult to, you know, determine which ones you need variances for. Your conformance table needs to be amended to really deal with the tower and the equipment compound. You know, your setback is your equipment compound, not the tower. The height issue is the tower height issue. You know, so you really need to kind of pare that down and focus on the site as a whole or in your construction project as a whole and not kind of piece it out for tower versus whatever.
Well, I think we have two different setbacks, right? I think we have, I think we have the underlying setback, and then we have the tower height setback.
You have, the tower height has a setback, but all side yards are two and three times what the zoning district requires. So if you read the wireless section in the code, it gives you the formula that you need to increase your setbacks within that district.
Correct.
So you don't need to do the district setbacks. The tower has its height, specific height requirements. So just clarify that in your zoning conformance table, and then that's the location you should really flesh out your variances, okay? I made some comments regarding the tree removal plan and unnecessary trees that were going to be taken out. We now require a coverage map, which is something different from the last time you were here. So you did coverage calculations in both building and development in your application. That needs to be transposed onto a map to make sure we're understanding the areas that you're looking for or what applies to that calculation. Wetlands permit. You submitted a wetlands permit. You spoke of one tonight. Having some wetlands mapping clearly depicting, you know, where the buffer is, and that site is kind of convoluted with it going in every, in a lot of different directions, it's really hard to ascertain how much of that wetland buffer you're disturbing for your project and what your required mitigation should be. In that vein, you should also submit a mitigation plan so that Steve can, can understand that and, and comment on that.
What's the buffer regulation out there?
It's a hundred feet. They're, you know, they're, they're in it.
Yeah.
The whole thing is basically in it.
Right. It quantifies the disturbance. Yeah, we just don't have any information, and honestly, that's why I didn't do a notice of intent for the board, because we just didn't have, that hole was not filled in the E A F, and you submitted applications, but no detail on that.
Sure.
Also, the board typically sends the radio frequency analysis to a radio frequency consultant, the visual analysis to a visual consultant. Today, Janet's verified the folks that we've used in the past, if they were still working and willing to consult. So we have some consultants, and we can work in some agreements and whatnot for you to sign, so we can do verification on those things.
How tall are the, the power towers, the lattice towers?
You know, I don't know the to, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. Usually they're around one-hundred-and-twenty, one-hundred-and-thirty feet, but you're not allowed on the top of the tower, there's usually a spot that, that they would allow, but.
It's okay, no, I'm not, I'm not interested in.
Yeah, you're comparing it aesthetically, I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, I was just going to say, I think that, you know, the applicant went to great length to demonstrate in his application, you know, the, the code talks about the location of a tower and the priority properties. It is on town property, but this isn't, is in a very active recreational area, so understanding the visual impact of this resource, of, of this tower on the natural resources and where people are recreating is really important, because I think, Dick, you bring up a, a good question in relation to the Con Ed towers, the electrical towers that are out there, and what is this relationship here? And your visual analysis should capture some of that.
I agree, and that's, that's an excellent point, that one of the benefits here is that we are near the Con Ed towers, and, and if there are, and I like what you said about, you know, what an aesthetic impact is, is something that, that's a resource. So if there's something that we missed on the map, again, I encourage, you know, before we do the balloon test, to let us know if there are specific locations that we might have overlooked, particularly ones that are resources, recreational resources and such, that we could add to the analysis.
If you can add topography to your map.
Absolutely.
To your map, I think that would help us identify missing areas.
Absolutely.
To have the two-foot contours put onto it.
Dick, regarding the aesthetic of the Con Ed, the Hoag's Cross Tower is with the Con Ed Tower, so you could see a full pole with a full array right next to the big old Con Ed structures, to get an idea of how they compare and how they look. They're right next to each other.
We've done location on these Con Ed structures, and I'm wondering whether or not if we're that close, if we couldn't just put them on.
It's actually the opposite. So T-Mobile, actually, they have a site in the vicinity on a Con Ed Tower, and they want to come off.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, the problem with the Con Ed Towers is that, from an operational standpoint, it's a disaster.
Oh, really?
They can't, they can't modify unless the Con Ed workers do the work. They can't modify unless the Con Ed workers do the work when they shut down the line.
And that was told, that was the exact.
Yeah.
What we said at the Hoag's Cross, when it was presented, put it on the Con Ed Tower, and they said, no, it's too much pan. Put it on the water tower, no, it's home and security. Put on the golf course, no, we can't do that. Put on Millwood Fire, oh, we can't do that because it's a life, it's a, it was a health hazard to the firemen.
Yeah.
So that's how it ended up in the residential neighborhood of Hoag's Cross.
Well, you know, but if I could say something about that, I remember all those conversations.
And I look out my bedroom window every day and see it, and I still have no cell phone service at my house.
Lose your car?
I see a tower horizon.
Put a radio every day. Put a radio on your phone, you'll be all set.
You'll put one in your yard.
And I get to look at the tower, but I can't use it.
So, what I was going to say was, I remember all those conversations, and one of the no's that the town had was the proposal to put it in Amsterdam Park, and that was a no for us. And we ended up with a, I think, a good solution, which is near the Con Ed right away. There was a property owner who was willing to take it on, and for me, this infrastructure of that scale, if it could be co-located as much as possible, that makes the most sense aesthetically to me, so.
And you guys did it to fall away.
Yeah.
So Mike, and I haven't seen all the material, it's, it's been here, but I've been focused on traffic things.
Traffic, yeah, a few traffic issues.
So, but it will be interesting to see the extent to which this site is a co-location.
Sure.
In proximity to infrastructure, large-scale infrastructure that's already there.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be a mitigating factor.
Yeah, and Vincent, Vincent Xavier's report goes through some of that. We looked, we looked again, we went through a couple-year process with the fire department, and eventually they said no. We did look at other properties, we had some interest, but there was some, there was some, you know, environmental issues in those properties. And then we, the town made this property available, and one of the benefits it is, is that it's either the Con Ed, which we're trying to cover, it's near Millwood, which we're trying to cover, but it's also near those Con Ed lines that has that, that benefit that you just articulated.
I'm looking forward to seeing how that works. But the balloon test will tell them.
Yeah, I mean, the, the balloon test is very important.
And I did know that you got, from the turn on Inny Wood Road going downhill, you have a, a location there for photographs, so, you know, the leaves are going to be down.
Yeah, that's why we, and again, we thought, we kind of waited, we had performed the pre-application meeting back some time ago, we waited to file, file until this time of the year, because we knew you'd want the leaves down on the, on the visuals.
Yeah.
We want to wait until January. We were thinking Janu, typically you like a weekend, so we were thinking January 5th, which is after the holidays, if it's bad weather, January 6th, if it's bad weather, the following weekend, and so forth and so on, just so everyone knows.
Because we have two requirements. We want the leaves off the trees, and we want the snow off the trees.
And we want it seventy degrees.
The snow, the snow, I can't guarantee.
Very tough to meet our requirements.
And January 5th is usually snowy, and I know that only since it's my birthday, so, you know, that, that's another important date, so.
I, I had a birthday party canceled because of the January 10th lizard.
A long time.
It was a lizard as Capricorn. It sticks in my head.
Okay.
Actually, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
One is, I wanted to ask, and I know we've talked about this before, but refresh my memory, the issue of gap in coverage versus capacity.
Sure.
And what the FCC, nineteen-ninety-six FCC Act requires.
Sure.
To be covered, and whether that drives the height of the, the pole.
So, so good news. It's, the nineteen-ninety-six Act was passed by Congress, and the courts, over the past twenty years or so, came up with all different definitions. You have to show a significant gap in coverage, and then it was extended to capacity, is that in-building? Well, the FCC just passed an order, it was released in September, it comes effect of January fourteenth, that says that the courts were all wrong, that you don't have to prove a significant gap in coverage, you have to prove that the, there's a need, and if there's a need and it materially inhibits the ability to provide service, then a municipality may not prohibit that facility. So what does material inhibit mean? What the FCC has said, basically, carriers are allowed to provide service across all their frequency bands, as I mentioned before. Now they have multiple frequency bands, they're allowed to densify their networks to handle additional capacity. They're allowed to use different technologies of their choosing, and those issues are really not for local municipalities to regulate on. But quite frankly, this application doesn't really change much of what you've seen in the past, because it's being driven by a gap in coverage. And that's why we submitted the maps.
Sounds like the FCC is not regulating anything either.
So the FCC is basically saying that they.
It's up to the carriers.
They interpreted the code to mean that, basically.
Yeah, of course they did.
But at the end of the day, as I said, we submitted.
Everybody vote.
We submitted the data. It's, this really isn't a densification-type site, it really is being driven by these coverage gaps, so those issues really aren't that relevant. But the carriers do provide coverage across all four of their frequency bands to be able to support that capacity. So when you read specifically the PierCon report on T-Mobile, they talk about how T-Mobile has a skinny bandwidth at seven-hundred megahertz, which covers a wide area, but a much bigger bandwidth at twenty-one-hundred megahertz, which carries much more capacity but covers a smaller area. And they need both, basically. So that's why we have different maps at different frequency bands in the report.
Okay.
Sabrina, given this is town property, why are we setting a precedent that you can go build in a wetland buffer?
I didn't make that decision.
We aren't, yeah.
And you're not. It's up to you guys.
No, we're filing for the, we're filing for the, for the permit.
The town just has a, has a, has a letter of, or a lease.
No, we have a lease.
You have a lease. They have a lease of intent to lease a certain area based on their approval by this board. So, the power is yours.
I never doubted that, but I was just curious as to, you know, why it kind of didn't get highlighted more than, other than they have some part of the facility in the wetland buffer.
Well, we haven't been submitting the information.
Yeah, no, and, and, and we're willing, we're obviously going to provide the documentation, the mitigation plan, the, the, all the requirements to go through the code and actually look at the potential impact on the wetlands. So that's part of this application process. The town board did not take the position to exempt the property and the facility from zoning. They took the opposite position to send it here to go through the process.
Bob, you have some comments?
Yes. Basically, I broke mine down in the stormwater in general. S T one, S T two, basically, for some reason, they didn't do the water quality, but I, because it's by the wetlands, it's very important to do that. And I gave some recommendations of what they should use. They, at the minimum, they have to treat the new imperviousness, which is the gravel on the roadway. That's S T one and S T two. For some reason, they used mixed filtration rates, but they never did any soil testing, so that's got to be done, S T three. It's going to be used for water quality, have to make certain, you have a three-feet separation from the bottom of the gravel to the bottom, top of the groundwater. S T four is just a discrepancy between the gravel base and what they show in the plans and what the stormwater count show. Got to revise that. S T five, S T six are standards, which are in every one, every commercial property that needs to submit a stormwater agreement with performance bonding and maintenance bonding. S T seven, all the reports should be properly bounded and stamped, as opposed to just paper-clipped. Kind of tough to read, they fall apart all the time. And then general comments, basically, they have a primary utility trench and a paved road section. They don't show the town specs on it, so I gave them the specifications with the three bullets, they should incorporate onto their plan. G two, this plant should provide for section detail regarding electrical conduit, because it goes over or under, I'm not quite sure how they're going to do it. Existing box concrete culvert, so they really should look at that, because sometimes those culverts come right up to the surface, and they might have to go under it, so they should show detail on that, and that's all on town property owned by the water department. They never submitted a steep slopes analysis based on one of, chapter one oh eight, have to do that. They should indicate the total area of disturbance, and they should include the trenching required for the underground electric, that's coming almost sixteen, sixteen-hundred feet, so that's got to be included in the disturbance area. G five, they should provide an engineer's cost estimate, because any commercial building has to submit that for the establishment of performance bonding and maintenance bonding for the stormwater and the associated inspection fees. And they have to complete certain sections of the stormwater application, which they did not do. G six and then G seven are just general notes we like to see on every plan that comes in that's approved by the planning board, and that's it.
Okay.
So I just want to mention one thing, because this is a wireless telecommunications facility application.
Can I just interject before we go to that? I have one other request, and that is, when we're, when you're doing, you know, in January, and then you're putting together the photo simulations for us to look at, can we look at tower versus tree tower at the same time, and, you know, have all those?
Yeah, what I would say is this, let us do the renderings, and then if there are certain ones that you say, let's look from this viewpoint, what would it look like from a tree?
You'd.
Yeah, because I, what I don't want to do is.
Rather do it now, you'd rather come back again?
Yeah, well, let me, let me see how the photographs come out first.
Okay.
And figure out what looks appropriate and what doesn't.
Okay.
And then we can continue to have that conversation. And you know from past experience, we'll, we'll produce them, it's not a problem, it's just, we want to produce them in a meaningful way.
Okay.
So we are under the, the so-called shot clock, as you probably recall from previous telecommunications facility applications. The September two thousand and eighteen FCC order declines to change the time periods from, from the existing time periods, so we do have the one-hundred-and-fifty-day shot clock time period within which the board needs to make a decision.
From when the application is.
Yeah, but we are in sort of a, a pause period, so to speak, until more information is submitted to complete the application.
So when does the clock begin to run?
So it, it started on November fifteenth, when we made the filing. It stopped when we received your first set of comments, because they came within the first thirty days. It doesn't start again until we refile in response to that.
And then the response needs to come within ten, ten days.
Correct.
Does that stop again?
And then it would stop again.
Yeah.
And we could always, and we can, if you recall from last time, we, we could always mutually agree to extend it, so.
Yeah.
We want to do the process right, so we're willing to work with you on that.
So the shot's in midair, and it stops?
This case, it wasn't barely even midair, though, it was like, kind of like, only like a half.
It seems like it's highly orchestrated to make that happen. It's really weird, so.
So does January 5th work?
So far.
Okay, and then.
Is it Saturday?
Does the board need the topography information before?
Yeah.
Yes. Before we can.
Wait, the topography information on what?
On that area, on that ma, on the, on the visual photo map.
Oh, that's the one you wanted it on, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I understand. That's not a problem.
Yeah, so the question's.
It's based on that, so it's based on that. So we can, they could add the, I'm sure they could add the topo. I don't know if it would be too far, but I'll just double-check.
And if we're going to, whatever it is. With the balloon test, you'll notify all the neighbors, I guess?
So I guess that's the question, what do you, what do you want to do?
Yeah, I think we should. We always do that. I think we've done that in the past.
Yep. Regularly mail ten days in advance or something?
What are we doing?
Do you send us, do they, does he?
There's nothing in the code.
Yeah.
What, what neighbors are, how do we define neighbors here?
Just give us a list of who you've notified.
Are you going to send the notice? Is that what you're suggesting?
No.
Okay.
Well.
So I have the list, I have the list as, that we already notified based on tree removal.
Which is a fairly short list, as I recall.
Yeah, because it's big properties next to it.
Yeah, it's like three, four, five people.
I think it's a few one of us.
Robert, let's do this, let's reserve that until we look at the photo map again.
For people on Inny Wood Road, we go down that road every day, many times a day, and so it's like.
Right, there might be.
Can I just?
Sorry.
There, there's everybody on Inny Wood Road who, for whom this is going to be something really significant. So it will be, I don't know how expansive we can be with this list, but I would say that it ought to be more so than just the immediate.
Sure, why don't we do this?